Caleb, she never said anything to me that she wasn't going to be here.
One more judicious minute is she or me, why do you ever share up with her? All right, then they will call this meeting to order. Caleb, we have a roll call please.
Kevinon.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Ruby is absent. Ping.
Here.
And Fisher.
Here. All right, so our first order of business is the approval of minutes from our last meeting. Do you have a chance to read through those? I have no comments, so happy to work with you for those. Motion, second there, all in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. All right, passes. Next on the agenda is visitor's public comment. It's time to comment on things that are not on the agenda. So we'll have plenty of time to comment on the annexation, PUD and subdivision. If you would like to speak to something not on the agenda, now is your time. Come forward, give us your name, address, and keep your remarks to under three minutes, please.
My name is Mike Burr, 560 Cal Road. I didn't make it to the last meeting and maybe some of this was handled, but I'm going to the city website for the minutes of this commission and it's, there's one set in there. And I found others digging through some other stuff, but I'm just wondering, it seems like it's lagging quite far behind in the minutes on what's going on, so maybe you guys could look at that. Maybe get those minutes out there a little more proficiently because it's not, it's not happening right now on the website. There's one set of minutes from my back.
And if I can speak to that, the minutes are usually inside the meeting packets? So if you, if.
Yeah, if you dig around there, and I know you, okay, okay, but you, a guy has to do some digging around. I don't think the general public person's gonna wade through that. There's a column for minutes on the website. It's just a matter of posting them, I would think. So I'm just throwing that out because you want people to participate and they want to know what's going on. This would help them understand what the commission's doing. So it, it, just a housekeeping thing, not, not, you guys are doing great work. The last meeting I did, I think the housing study was approved and that was going out, but there was also a case where you said the copy of that housing study or what the questionnaire, what it was, was going to be on the city website. And I haven't been able to find that either.
I can address that. There's a, there's a banner on top that is running across the top of the link. For all the, the survey and the study is there, so if you don't find it, give me a call and I'll go back there and look at it, but it's supposed to be in that banner.
Okay, great, great. Appreciate that. And then the, the last question I have is, what if any, have you guys heard, maybe this will come up, maybe someone to talk about it, but are the cities that are affected by this new planning law and that you're all working on? Remember, it doesn't go into effect until 2026. And the legislative session's coming up beginning in January. What are the cities or have you heard or are the cities affected? Are they, are they trying to get anything together to, to propose legislation to, to change or, or maybe make this thing a little, take some of the rough edges off that everybody has, has discovered? Is there any?
I, so in my conversations with the Montana League of Cities and Towns, they are looking at it, but at the same time, kind of the other message to legislators is let us get through part of this to see where we're at. So there is, so I don't think the league right now is going forward with any specific legislation, but if you, I know if you go to the Montana League of Cities and Towns website and there's a section in there called advocacy. And they have about eight to 10 resolutions up there right now that are, they're kind of the, the topics that the league is working on. I, last time I looked, I did not specifically see a resolution on Sunnyville 382, so I'd say right now there's not a big push by the league because I think it's more of let us see where this thing goes and, and, and take it from there. So, but those resolutions are available on the league's website.
Great, great. I guess the last thing being that I read where Cowsbell, you know, they're a little further along the path than Columbia Falls. It, it had been brought up, you know, a, a project that gets approved because all the previous legwork is done basically in the document, so the developer gets it approved because he's met all those criteria and so they get the green light to do the project and so they show up in the neighborhood or wherever it is for the shovel and dirt mover and start doing it. And Cowsbell's trying to decide, are we gonna put out any notice at all that a project was approved and how are we gonna let people know? So I just, I think that's a real forward thinking thing to maybe try and fold into what you guys are doing is that how in the world, even if something is met? And I know the law probably doesn't require anything, but just the courtesy, and that's what it was, of letting a neighbor or a neighborhood perhaps know, yeah. When you got on the adjacent five acres, we're putting in 200 houses or something, you know, how? Because, because people will react and they see the, the excavator probably not, something, anyways, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Would anyone else like to speak to something not on the agenda tonight? All right, I'm seeing none, then we will move forward into our public hearings. And so we have effectively three public hearings, but they all relate to the same. They're all stacked on the same, so we're going to have one set, one, one presentation and then one after you can public comment and I can split them up into three, yes, correct?
Correct. So it's a single report. There'll be a single staff report, single public hearing. And then discussion kind of on all topics and then there'll be three separate motions.
Understood. Well, with that, shall I turn it to you Eric? Are you gonna do it on this?
Yep.
Thank you very much.
So this is really the first project that we've had that's coming since the 32 legislation has, has become effective and we've started our planning commission. And we've essentially let go of our extraterritorial planning jurisdiction, which used to make development within that one mile jurisdiction, essentially it was, the annexation wasn't as important because the zoning was already set within that donor area. But now with this, under today's rule, our jurisdiction essentially stops at our city limits boundary, so part of the development that's coming into the city is the annexation and initial zoning. So really what we're looking at is that annexation, the hearing is really on the zoning. The, the council is the one that makes a decision on the annexation essentially, but it's all kind of rolled into this report. So I'll go through this report, which will be the annexation, CA 2401 with an initial zoning of CR5 at planned unit development, which is CPUD 2401 and then a major subdivision report, which is a CPP 2401. The application is located at 274 Meadow Lake Boulevard, which is just north of Bestway. A few hundred feet in Columbia Falls. The legal description is parcel B of COS 22075 in Section 7 Township 30 Range 20. As stated, it's a application set with the initial zoning from the existing county R5, which is a two-family zone to a CR5 two-family zoning, which is a city zone. With a PUD overlay, which is a zoning overlay over the top of that initial zoning. And then lastly, the subdivision, which would create 10 parent lots with two sublots on each parent lots for a total of 20 units. Currently, the property is vacant, except that the property to the north has two sheds and some fence that encroach on the property, which would be removed with the development. The zoning to the north, we have R5 two-family and R1 single-family. To the south, we have R5, R1 and CRA1, which is multifamily. To the east, we have light industrial and to the west, we have single-family R1. The land uses to the north is primarily single-family residential. To this house, to the south, we have single-family residential and a conditional use permit for multifamily residential. To the east, we have the warehouse or MDF mill and some mini storage and then to the west is simply family. And you can look at the zoning map in the staff report that kind of lays out those adjacent zones. The general character of the area is kind of transitional with the, with the light industrial along the east side of Meadow Lake Boulevard, but on the west side currently it's a single-family residential. But as we move south, that transitions into light industrial uses as well as the CUP for the multifamily and then the assisted living facilities and then commercial when we hit the intersection of Highway 2 and a manufactured home park on the west side of that intersection. The growth policy for this area is designated as multifamily residential. This designated, this designation was changed to this multifamily category in the 2019 update of our growth policy. Prior to that, it was urban residential. So that urban residential would have supported the R5, but it also supports the multifamily supports the CRA1, but it also supports the R5. The growth policy map is shown on the next page, which is the dark orange, and so you can see that the that multifamily designation essentially runs all along the west side of Meadow Lake Boulevard, north to the Burlington Northern tracks. Public services with the annexation, municipal water and sewer would be available. Refuge would be contract taller. Columbia Falls City Fire Department would be the service provider upon annexation. For fire, police would be the City Police Department with annexation. But Co-op and School District 6 are our service providers. The annexation essentially is described in Part 46 under petition Title 7-2-4601 3A double I, which essentially states that if more than 50% of the owner's petition, petition for annexation, that it's essentially reviewed by the city council. There's no hearing or essentially protest of that annexation. This annexation is also supported through the growth policy as well as the city has existing city sewer main in Meadow Lake Boulevard providing service to the Meadow Lake Resort. City water is currently to the assisted living facility to the south and would be extended either with the Ruas project to the north, the 102 lot residential subdivision as a preliminary plat or, or extended north with the development of the apartment project. The zoning for this, as I stated, is currently R5, which is a two-family residential. This was just essentially put in as an interim zoning classification by the county when they took over the jurisdiction at the beginning of July. So they have R5, which essentially followed our growth policy and the zoning that was on the property when they took it over. What the applicants are requesting is an R5, which is nearly identical to the county's R5. They're both two-family residential, allowing either duplex dwellings, two-unit condos or two-unit town, townhomes as proposed. As I stated, the growth policy and the numerous policies support the multifamily residential designation. The multifamily designation allows eight units or more per acre. The CR5 zoning fits this and the growth policy map. And looking at Criteria 2 congestion in the street, the property runs on Meadow Lake Boulevard, which is currently a county maintained collector road. With annexation, the section of Meadow Lake Boulevard adjacent to the annexed property would become City Street. And that is per state law, when the city annexes, the adjacent street goes into the city. The in talking with the Public Works Department, it appeared that there was no impacts to the road. County collector or city collector can handle much more traffic than is currently on Meadow Lake Boulevard or anticipated in the near future. It's got quite a wide cross-section. This 20-unit development does not trigger the need for an impact or a traffic impact study. Generally, we look at a traffic impact study at 30 or more units. We did do a traffic impact study for both the Ruas development as well as the multifamily development to the south. Really, the, the outcome of the traffic impact study on the multifamily project was primarily site distance modifications, clearing out some vegetation to make, make that work. And essentially downstream at the intersection with Meadow Lake and Highway 2, trying to work with the MDOT team to encourage some signalization changes in, in the future that would create a left-hand turn movement and a right-hand turn movement so that traffic doesn't get bottled up at that particular intersection. And that, that comment has been put into the Columbia Falls Long Range Transportation Plan and was brought up to the MDOT and our meetings that we have on a periodic basis with, with those groups, those other transportation departments. We also took this project through our Columbia Falls Site Review Committee, which is Public Works Building, Fire, and this was reviewed by Chief Weeks. He reviewed the site plan. He was good with the access, good with the with bringing the city water in and hydrants to the project and he was also okay with the hammerhead turnaround at the end of the project. So he didn't feel that there was any, any issues with public safety from his standpoint. The property is not in an area that has sensitive lands like wetlands, floodplains, steep slopes. So there's, there's generally no hazards associated with property that would affect the development. The standards within the PUD have height setbacks standards as well as a requirement for 30% open space. So that would meet the light and air requirements of zoning. The overcrowding of the land, essentially this is an identical zoning with the county. The CR5 allows two units on 5,400 square foot lots, which essentially is what they're proposing. So the, the density of this particular development is anticipated by the current zoning as well as the growth policy. The criteria for concentration of the people is essentially identical to the overcrowding of the land. Looking at the, the project and the provisions for transportation, sewer schools, et cetera. Those will be addressed with the project annexing and extending city services into the prop, property building the city's, or building the private road into the property to the city standard with the exception of the deviations proposed in the planned unit development. The zone does give consideration to the suitability of the property for the particular use and that the zoning has been in place for the R5 for a number of years, whether it was the R5, the CR5 prior to the city giving that jurisdiction up and then currently with the county's R5 designation. The character of the neighborhood is, as I stated, is a mix of residential and industrial, with the industrial uses primarily being on the east side of Meadow Lake Boulevard, residential being on the west side. Adjacent to the property is primarily single-family, but there is a multifamily project to the south as well as an assisted living and a manufactured home park and then the development with the Ruas project just south of the Burlington Northern tracks is single-family and two-unit townhomes. So that project also has a land use pattern that is similar to what the applicants are proposing. So essentially the reviewing the criteria provided for zone change, the project essentially complies with those review criteria. And then looking, looking at the planned unit development, again, this is an overlay that's reviewed per the PUD standards. And they look at the growth policy and the map. Density is allowed for the policy support the, the use and the density. The applicants are asking for several deviations. The initial deviations are to the setbacks. So the zoning would require a 20-foot rear yard setback and the applicants in this instance are asking for a 10-foot foot side yard setback. And then there's a zero setback between the two units, which is typical of townhouse. That's not really a deviation. But I just bring it up so that you're aware of that. And then lastly, in the front, they, they're asking, they're showing a 15-foot setback on the drawing, but to, in clarification with the applicant, applicants, they're actually recessing the garage from the front of the house to 20 feet so that there'll be 20 feet of separation between the garage door and the outside edge of the sidewalk. So a car parked in front of the garage will not impede the sidewalks on each side of the street that goes into this development. And just for clarity, I, I added a condition in the subdivision and PUD that essentially spells that out so that when this comes, if it's approved and it comes in for building permits, those would be reviewed for that particular element. And the, the last deviation is to the road cross-section. Typically, we look at a cross-section of 60 feet for a road width, curb gutter sidewalks, Boulevard for planting and then a five-foot sidewalk, which essentially consumes the 60 feet. What the applicants are looking at here would be a 24-foot paved road surface with five-foot sidewalks on each side of the road, which essentially is a 34-foot easement for the access. Utilitiesments can run within the setbacks for dry utilities, so there would be room for those. So given that this is a private road, it generally meets the components of providing the access through the PUD requirements. And it's essentially an alternative road cross-section. Looking through the bulk and dimensional standards, PUDs need to be two acres or more in size. This, this meets that. Not more than 70% of the PUD can be devoted to parking streets and building and in this case, there's, there are only 38% of the coverage are those three items, so they're meeting that requirement. PUD also requires that there be two parking spaces per living unit. The applicants are proposing a two-car garage and then with the 20-foot driveway in front of the garage, there'll actually be four spaces per unit. And then they've also provided three guest parking spaces near the front of the development. So they, they meet the parking standards. Land aiming is generally met through the, the open space buffering. And they essentially have the bulk of their open spaces north of the, the project and along the Meadow Lake Boulevard frontage. And then they have some open space near the hammerhead to the to the west of the project. And that's also where some of the recreational amenities will be placed is in that that emergency vehicle turnaround at the, at the end. that um emergency vehicle turnaround at the at the end of the project. Um, utilities will be brought into the Columbia Falls Public Works Standards, which also require review by the Montana Department of Environmental Quality for sewer water and stormwater. Um uh, the Public Works Department will also look at the road um as well as the road approach um for meeting site distance standards into the project. Um, and dry utilities are reviewed and approved by the the utility provider, so flat electric or electric, et cetera. Um, there is no architectural um requirements in our standards for single family or two unit homes, so there's nothing that would be app applicable to this particular project. Other than the applicants will meet all the Balkan dimensional standards of our um zoning. And then lastly, um the P U D is coming in with a density of eight point eight units per acre, which meets the um P U D threshold of twelve units per acre maximum. So um so essentially, that um meets the P U D standards um provided in our um zoning regulations. And then lastly, looking at the preliminary plat, um essentially, there's criteria that we review for impacts. Um there's impacts to public health, there's impacts to agricultural and agricultural water users facilities. There is no agriculture on or adjacent to the property, so there's no impacts to those particular facilities. Um, kind of in line with what we addressed in the P U D of zoning. Um, there's no um sensitive or environmentally uh hazardous um sites on the property, no steep slopes, no um sh- uh shallow um uh groundwater, no wetlands, no water features, uh no bedrock um located on the site, and there's no high voltage power lines or high pressure gas lines that run through the pro- project. Um. As I stated, the Columbia Falls Fire Department has reviewed the the project and has approved the uh cross section of the road as well as the Hammerhead. Um, site distance will be reviewed um with an uh approach application to the Public Works Department. Um, we do um realize that um Meadow Lake Boulevard is is a collector road um and um that there has always been concern about particularly pedestrian access along Meadow Lake Boulevard. Um we, to address that particular item in past applications, uh we have looked at um conditions that uh require the backfilling of the particularly the water line, water main extension so that it can be at a grade where um a path can be placed on top of that. So um that was a condition of the the previous um multifamily project, and we put that in as a condition of this project. In addition to that, um you generally would require um sidewalk to be installed along the frontage of a project, and that is a condition of this approval, but we've also put the option in there that the city um uh could take the the cash and loom of that sidewalk um fee and put it towards the path um on the other side of the street so that they could potentially get, you know, a longer gravel path with those funds than they could with a five foot um concrete sidewalk in front of this project. So that is um also part of the conditions of approval to try to address um the pedestrian safety along Meadow Lake Boulevard. Um, I will also state that secondary access is not required um for developments of roads that are less than six hundred feet in length. This particular road is four hundred and forty five feet in length, so secondary ac- access is not required. The internal subdivision road will be paved. There will be sidewalks um on both sides of that road um as part of the um conditions of approval of this particular um project. Um. See. As I stated, there's there's no associated hazards on or adjacent to the site. Um looking at wildlife habitat, um this is an area that's been designated in the city for urban and multifamily residential. Um, it's also an area that's um adjacent to city services, so this this density is developed. It's not to say that, you know, some species such as bears or other animals wouldn't wander through this particular site, but there's also no um habitat that on on the property that would necessarily attract um wildlife to the site over other sites um in and around the project. Um, there's no, like I said, wetlands or uh properties that would be potentially habitat to endangered species on this site. So essentially, going through the review criteria, the um subdivision appears to comply with the city standards. Um, and staff is recommending approval of the three items in the recommendation. So again, there would be um three three motions that would need to be made and voted on, and then that recommendation on those three motions would be um forwarded to the uh City Council, who who will hold um additional public hearings on those three items. Uh, we are making um our recommendations based on twenty seven conditions of approval. I can read through those conditions, or if you have specific um questions on those conditions, I would be happy to address those.
Um, I have our health conditions. I presume that we have here, um if you can do any benefit of for the uh the audience who may not read those, please uh go through a free summary of those or
Well, I can read through them. I don't know that I can summarize them. I may have better time to read through, but I'll I'll do that.
I I appreciate that. I think the audience may might appreciate that. Thank you, Eric.
Okay, um, the two seventy four Meadow Lake Boulevard P U D will allow the following deviations, the setback deviation of ten feet to the rear yard setback and a fifteen foot front yard set uh front yard setback, except that the garage shall be twenty feet from the back of the sidewalk. Um, item B is the road deviation is for a thirty foot uh easement with a twenty four foot paved road and five foot concrete sidewalks immediately adjacent to the street. Condition number two, some projects shall be built in subs- substantial compliance with the preliminary plat. And P U D maps one through five dated November twenty twenty four and prepared by T D and H Engineering. Condition three, each residential unit shall provide a two car garage um uh two two car garage um and uh two driveway parking spaces as proposed in the application. Condition four is the the trees within the rear yard setback shall be retained, except for grading for stormwater flow is necessary to prevent flow on neighboring properties. In locations that grading is necessary for stormwater drainage, the applicant shall plant a vegetative screen consisting of the evergreen trees, six feet in height, every twenty feet on center. Condition number five is the Columbia Falls Fire Chief Chief shall approve the fire hydrant locations. Condition number six is prior to sewer connection, the applicants shall need to verify with the Columbia Falls Public Works Department that there is adequate capacity in the force main. If there's not capacity, the applicant will need to extend a gravity main from the south up to the property. Condition seven is the applicant shall provide a ten foot pedestrian easement along Meadow Lake Boulevard frontage. Condition eight is the city that the city direction and cash and loo of installing the sidewalk may be considered along the Meadow Lake Boulevard frontage. Condition number nine is the applicant shall work with Public Works on the water main extension so that it may be finished graded to allow for a primitive path be completed in the future. Condition ten is the road construction shall meet the requirements of chapter seventeen point sixteen of the Columbia Falls uh subdivision regulations and the Columbia Falls Public Works Standards, except as modified by these conditions. The construction plans shall be reviewed and approved by the city prior to construction. The road construction shall be certified by a registered engineer that it meets such standards following construction and the roadway uh prior to final plat approval. Condition eleven is the applicant shall secure a new approach permit from the Columbia Falls Public Works Department for accessing onto Meadow Lake Boulevard. Site distance shall be verified through this process. Condition number twelve is the road easement within the subdivision shall be dedicated a private street with maintenance provided by the homeowners association. Condition number thirteen, the developer shall create a homeowners association that will be responsible for the maintenance and long term replacement of common areas, internal roads and sidewalks and stormwater facilities. Condition fourteen is Columbia Falls Postmaster shall approve a common mailbox facility at an included location. The facility the facility shall meet the requirements of seventeen point eighteen point two five zero. The the facility shall be installed prior to final plat or included in a subdivision improvements agreement. Condition fifteen, the developer shall provide a student loading and unloading facility at an improved location at the discretion of the school district or provide a letter from the school district stating that the bus stop is not required. Condition sixteen, the sewer water and stormwater facilities shall be reviewed and approved by the Columbia Falls Public Works Department and the Montana Department of Environmental Quality. Water, sewer, and stormwater shall be constructed in accordance with the approved plans, and the construction shall be certified by a registered engineer that they meet the approved specifications, and the sewer water main shall be accepted by the city of Columbia Falls prior to final plat. Condition seventeen, a note shall be placed on the face of the plat stating all dwellings shall have house numbers visible from the internal subdivision road. Condition eighteen, applicants shall provide uh copies of the final plat drawings and as-built construction drawings of all public works infrastructure and utilities existing or constructed in the right of way or easements. Copies of drawings shall be both paper and digital. Digital copies shall be in the format prescribed by the city. Condition nineteen, all utilities shall be installed underground and stubbed to each lot prior to the paving of roads. Condition twenty, the Flathead County uh Weed Department shall approve the weed management plan for the development developed area prior to final plat. A note shall be placed on the final plat that law owners are subject to the weed management plan approved by the Flathead County Weed Department. Condition number twenty one, that park requirement shall be met by the open space shown on the P U D map and and as prescribed in the P U D regulations. The applicant shall install a basketball hoop and pickleball court as shown on the preliminary plat, P U D maps. Condition twenty two, assessment for taxation and special assessments of land within the common area shall be proportionally shared among all lots in the subdivisions. The portion proportion may be equal or based upon the area um of the lot in proportion to the total area of the lots. Such assessment shall be reported to Flathead County, billed and collected with the tax and assessment due each lot. Condition twenty three, platinum shall be added to the face of plat to indicate that the park and common area are dedicated in perpetuity and that said spaces will be owned and maintained by the homeowners associations. Changes to the use or the management of the common sperry space and park shall be approved by the homeowners association and city. Condition twenty four is the following note shall be indicated in the following notes indicating the P U D deviation shall be placed on the face of the final plat, and those are the deviations described in condition one. Condition twenty five, all improvements to the public right of way shall be complete and guaranteed through a subdivision and through a subdivision improvements agreement prior to final plat, the developer shall be complete or guaranteed through an S I A. The developer shall warranty the infrastructure improvements for a minimum of one year after the approval of the final plat. Condition number twenty six, the applicant shall provide a letter from the applicable solid waste contractor stating that solid waste service is available to the subdivision. The C C N Rs will encourage use of a solid waste contractor for the residences in the subdivision. And condition number twenty seven is the preliminary plat shall expire expire three years after the approved effective date stipulated by the city council. Extensions may be granted by the city council if the applicant requests the extensions thirty days prior to the expiration of the plat for any remaining days.
Eric, thank you for reading through those for the benefit of the audience. Um, before we move forward, all the information that Eric presented, if you have any questions for Eric, I think we'll if you have any questions here, we'll also have here from the applicants, and if they have any answers to this question, whatever's on your mind right now.
Uh, Eric, that is, if I can listen to you.
Okay. Um, that you have anything to add before we go to the applicants?
Nope.
Um, if the applicants here would like to uh present to us and tell us anything else that we should know. Um, and you can state your name.
Toby Jopris. Uh, my address is two two five East Bowman Drive and Hal Spell. Um, thank you all. Thank you, Eric, for the presentation. It's your time. Um, Eric definitely covered pretty much everything. Got a little background on it. This this property's original appeal to me was this location off of Meadow Lake Boulevard and it being kind of the last lot in this in the city's growth policy that would allow for a multifamily designation. And so I'm kind of exploring options for it, having some initial conversations with Susan prior to her retirement. Talking to Eric about what what they're seeing in town as far as demand and everything. Um, and also, obviously, my day job, I've been a maker, local manager for eighteen years, so um, very clear, huge need for for some sort of entry level um homeownership opportunities. And so that's the that's the route we went with this. Um, with the sublots, it does result in the opportunity for somebody to buy an actual single unit and not not purchasing two units, just to make sure we all know that. Uh, lots of lots of loan programs available for for that type of product and that type of buyer. So um yeah, excited to bring this to um to the community for for some for some opportunities for homeownership and I've got T D Hs here and um Doug Kepmeyer and T D H and Aaron Wallace with Montana Creative to answer any technical questions. And yeah, that's that's all I have. Yeah, thank you for your time.
Okay. Um, so the board, I figure at this point, we will uh go with public hearing unless people else want to think about this. Close about the hearing, then we will discuss, and if anything comes up in that public hearing that we need to ask some questions to our planner or the applicants to do that. Um, and a reminder, before we start the public hearing, um this is, you're giving us, the board, um your opinions and your thoughts on this matter, um direct your uh direct your comments towards us. This is not a time to ask questions of the um of the applicants or the board, and this is not question and answer per se. This is you tell us what you think. We'll take some notes and we will take that into consideration of this discussion, if that makes sense. Um, so with that said, we'll open our public hearing, and when you come up, please state your name, your address, and try to limit your comments to three minutes, anything like that. This public hearing is open. Someone would like to speak to us.
So, one six five Bowman Drive, just to the south and then um proposal. It looks like all the deals are um dotted and crossed. Um, I just want to remind that both the county and the state rejected um south of that um this proposal for that density of building. He mentioned a south one that I'm not aware aware of. Um and I've been watching it unless it's the Reed property there where they're filming. I don't know about that, but um there is a nice quiet neighborhood. I don't I don't know about that, but um, there is a nice quiet neighborhood. I don't know that this will add or take away from that, but Meadow Lakes is a very busy um boulevard and this will along with the hundred and twenty that Ruiz is building, increase that traffic greatly. And I don't know if you're planning on um stoplights for those in and outs or in the future or reducing the speed limits or or whatever, but I think there needs to be a lot of consideration there. And the other consideration is is that there's properties to the west of the properties that are being um built there and a private drive limits the access to those properties for the city and everybody else. And I don't know if the planning commission has um brought that into their picture or not, but anyway, thank you for your time.
I have a little bit of a speech here I wrote up. You guys touched with most of it here.
So before you begin, for the record, did you have an address?
Uh, my name is Chris Smith and I live at two sixty eight Meadow Lake Boulevard. Um, did you guys all get my packet I dropped off yesterday? Uh, my comments?
Yeah, we just got them today, so I skimmed it in two minutes.
Okay.
I had a chance to, I don't know if you guys had a chance to, that would be exact same, right? Just skimmed it.
Just skimmed it.
On our desk.
Yeah, today. Okay, so here we go here. Um, good evening, members of the council. Thanks for allowing me to speak. Again, my name is Chris Smith and I reside at two sixty eight Meadow Lake Boulevard. Directly adjacent to two eight, their lot under consideration for rezoning. I'm here today to express my concerns about the proposed ten lot unit town home division subdivision and urge you to deny the rezoning request. First, this proposal is incompatible with the established character of my neighborhood. Our area is predominantly single-family homes on larger lots which provide a sense of open space, privacy and tranquility. This development with its dense urban style townhomes would drastically alter that character. The lot in question is heavily wooded, serving as a natural buffer and contributing to the neighborhoods of static appeal. Clear within this land for high-density housing would destroy its beauty and diminish the sense of space that makes this area unique. Second, the safety concerns on Meadow Lake Boulevard cannot be overstated. This road is already treacherous, especially in winter. Every year, I personally witness vehicles sliding into the dishes and speeding remains a persistent problem with part regular seating posted limit by twenty miles an hour. To address this issue, we have to reach out to our county to request action on the speeding problem. In response, increased controls increased patrols were deployed throughout the summer. The fact that these patrols were in place for extended period shows that speeding on Meadow Lake Boulevard is a well-documented issue. Enforcement efforts during this time confirmed what residents already knew. This road where speeding is rampant and hazardous. The staff report acknowledges that the subdivision will also have a single point of ingress and egress into Meadow Lake Boulevard. This design concentrates traffic flow, raises concerns about congestion and safety, especially given the known speeding issues. Addition additionally, the absence of secondary grass could complicate emergency response efforts. Adding traffic from twenty more housing units will exaggerate these dangers. This road lacks sidewalks and traffic calming measures putting pedestrians, cyclists and drivers at even greater risk. Provoke this project without addressing these safety concerns would be a serious oversight. I understand and acknowledge that there is a genuine need for housing in our town. Families and individuals are seeking homes and addressing this demand is important for our community's growth and vitality. However, housing must be built thoughtfully and responsibly. The staff report references the city's rural policy, which emphasizes the need for housing that is compatible with larger single-family neighborhoods and encourages walkable communities. However, this project falls short in integrating these principles. The proposed density, reduced setbacks and narrow road easements are starkly inconsistent with the spacious single-family character of the surrounding area. While townhomes can provide a mix of housing options, this design of this project prioritizes squeezing units into a confined area rather than fostering a community or into the neighborhood. Additionally, the lack of connections to existing pedestrian paths are adequate or adequate recreational amenities undermines its alignment with the city-state goals. Sorry, I'm a little nervous here. Um, so I'm deeply troubled by how the city has designated my property and the surrounding single-family homes as as areas for future developments of eight units or more. These established properties where families like mine live in single-family homes. The staff report highlights that in two thousand nineteen, the Columbia Falls Planning Commission and City Council changed the land use designation in this area from urban residential to multifamily residential. This change feels like an intentional push to transition our neighborhood into one filled with dense developments like townhomes. Seems like the city is prioritizing squeezing more units into our area at the expense of the families who already live there. I worry this is an effort to push out existing residents, demolish our homes and replace them with higher density housing that doesn't reflect the neighborhood's character. The staff report notes that much of the timber on the property will be removed for road and building pad construction. While the developer proposes open spaces in the front and rear of the property to preserve trees, these measures will only retain a fraction of the current forested environment. The loss of vegetation will increase stormwater runoff and contribute to the loss of wildlife habitat. Although this report claims minimal wildlife impact, it fails to consider that even transitional zones like this serve as corridors for species that rely on these wooded areas. The report also raises concerns about adequacy of existing wastewater force made on Meadow Lake Boulevard. Developers may need to extend a gravity maintenance out adding another layer of infrastructure complexity. The uncertainty should not be dismissed when evaluating the feasibility of this project. Furthermore, while this development proposed sidewalks within its private roads, the lack of continuous sidewalks or pedestrian infrastructure along Meadow Lake Boulevard remains a significant safety issue. This report suggests cash and lieu contributions for future sidewalk improvements, but this leaves current residents and pedestrians without immediate solutions. If this property is annexed into the city, it would likely increase the value of my property. While this sound might sound beneficial, it comes with significant downside. Higher property taxes that I simply cannot afford. I purchased my home with the dream of raising my family here and retiring in this peaceful neighborhood. However, property taxes rise too much and may be forced to leave the home and community I love. The unintended consequences must be considered when evaluating the broader impacts of this development. Finally, approving this rezoning would set a dangerous precedent for the future development. The staff report highlights another nearby development, including a hundred and two unit project and a previously approved thirty-six unit complex. While these projects promise to bring necessary housing, they also contribute to cumulative strain on local infrastructure, traffic and public services. Approving yet another high-density product in close proximity risks overburdening the area and diminishing the quality of life for the existing residents. In closing, I urge council to deny the rezoning request. This project does not serve the best interests of our community. While housing is needed and must be done in the way that respects our environment, protects wildlife and ensures safety and preserves the privacy and character of the surrounding areas. The proposal prioritizes short-term profits over these critical considerations. I ask you to prioritize thoughtful, community-focused development that aligns with our town's values, long-term vision. Thank you for your time. Concerning voices.
Field of point, um, two eighty-five Shooting Star Drive, Columbia Falls, Montana, and I'm representing the Flathead Neighborhood Association this evening. Um, to the planning commission, thank you for serving. To you individuals, thank you for serving on the planning commission. Your work is incredibly important in this moment in time in history, um, important for the present and the future of our community. So I appreciate you being here tonight and struggling through these difficult, contentious but exciting issues. The Upper Flathead Neighborhood Association encourages with the comments that Patrick Malone has submitted to you via email, via mail. I would like to highlight two of the items he listed under number three conditions of approval. And I quote, um, as the previous gentleman stated, if um uh, to amend number eight, if the city accepts cash and lieu of installing sidewalks, the city must commence construction with in one year of development build out. Um, as we all know that Meadow Lake Boulevard is a narrow and um questionably whether or not it's a safe thoroughfare. There are currently no sidewalks or curbs along this narrow road. It's likely that new residents would be walking and biking to Super One and other stores along Highway Two and safety is a huge issue as well as the flow of traffic. And it seems to me in looking toward the future, if development of the city is going in that direction, that instead of just making an informal gravel path along Meadow Lake Boulevard, that it would be well worth the um financial commitment of the city and the county to actually put to widen that road and to put some um real sidewalks or at least of a blacktop path along there rather than just a gravel informal track along there. Um, the sidewalk or blacktop would also make it a whole lot easier for snow removal, which is a huge issue on the sidewalks along the streets um and the and Highway Two that goes through Columbia Falls. So that is definitely an impact on public health for sure. Item number two, that Mr. Malone stated was um a new um condition for number twenty-seven. The applicant must guarantee that through deed restricted CCRs, short-term rentals will not be allowed. As we've heard over and over, Columbia Falls needs long-term housing for workers. Other communities restrict short-term housing to certain areas, so why can't Columbia Falls do that? And um, Mr. Kavanaugh, as you'll remember, that um with this development, the previous proposal um uh, the short-term rentals were a big issue there. And when when they changed that um changed their plans and wanted half of the development to be short-term rentals, I believe that that was one of the major reasons why it was denied. So um, I really, really recommend to you that you follow Mr. Malone's suggestion and put deed restrictions that there will absolutely not be short-term rentals in this development. Short-term housing is encroaching into residential neighborhoods and disrupting our neighborhoods and destroying their sense of community. And um, as a member of the Upper Flathead Neighborhood Association, I've had um three individuals at the very minimum who have come to me and have been very upset about the short-term rentals that are going into their neighborhoods and are disrupting um their lives because of that. As I've been known to quote, "Communities exist for the health and enjoyment of those who live in them, not for the convenience of those who drive through them, fly over them, or exploit their real estate for profit." So the the main word there is communities. How can we make help ensure that Columbia Falls will continue to be a community where we care about each other? And then finally, in terms of the impact this development will have on the habitat, as the previous gentleman spoke, this is one of the issues listed in the findings of facts. Um, the the whole issue of um the impact on the natural world. Um, nearly two point two seven acres of mature trees will be destroyed as a result of this project. Trees provide habitat for birds and small mammals. In two thousand nineteen, the three billion bird study reported in the Journal of Science found a loss of more than a quarter of our North American birds in the fifty years prior um to two thousand nineteen. So in fifty years, a quarter of the birds in North America had disappeared. And the habitat loss is one of the top three reasons for the large decline in bird homeowners. Three billion fewer birds in that time span. Um, I might add that cats are the number one cause of the loss of of birds, of songbirds. So with any household new development, um, if cats are allowed to roam free, we're also going to be losing our birds. Birds are an indicator species serving as a hugely sensitive barometer of environmental health and their mass declines signal that the earth's biological systems are in trouble. At this point, some people would probably be rolling their eyes at me bringing this issue up. Um, but I think that it's a major consequence because of the cumulative um piece of it that two point two seven acres might not be a huge thing for the loss of all of these mature trees, but then when the next development goes in, the next development goes in, that it does start being a major factor. Trees also capture carbon dioxide from the air and in turn give off oxygen, making our environment a healthier place to be. So my suggestion for this is that um, I'm encouraging the city, residents and developers to compensate for the loss of trees due to disdevelopment by engaging in a pre-planting effort to replace the trees for those from this development and others. Um, and you may or may not recall that my family, um, out along Rogers Road, when the bench is subdivision, maybe three or four years ago, that that's at the same time, we planted four hundred trees in one of our fields. And basically I said to the developer, for every tree you take out of there, I'm going to plant a tree. And I think that we as a community um need to consider that of how we are going to contribute to the health of our citizens and environment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, girl. Would anyone else like to speak to us?
Well, you know, I was one second by homestead. I just want to say that I'm in agreement with my neighbors in opposition to this annexation and rezoning. And I couldn't have said it better than they did. So I'm just going to leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to us?
I'm CEO. This.
Uh, Doug Cutmire, T D H Engineering, four fifty Corporate Drive, Hallsdale, Montana. Um, so I just thought I'd take this opportunity. I think public comment is kind of closed, so I thought I would try to address these. Unfortunately, nothing was provided to us. So we're kind of just doing this on the fly right now. There was no public comment in packet. And and the stuff that sounds like you guys got today, we haven't even seen. So um, we would have addressed those prior, but I I thought I was trying to take a stab at a little bit of this. Um, so I just wanted to clarify that we're not asking for a change in zoning. This is obviously, we're switching from county zoning to city zone and its consistence are five. Both. Um, so what's allowed in the county as of today is what's we're asking for. Um, short-term rentals, I don't believe are even allowed in the zoning area. Do you can probably confirm that? So I think the zoning covers it. But um, do you want, do you want to address that?
Let's let's go to this to your public comment.
And then uh, so then I just wanted to clarify the cash and lieu option is at the city's discretion for the condition. Um, the applicant is not asking to do that. Um, and then just the final is again, the the safety of the road, you know, a T I S is usually what's required when when those things are considered. Um, one was not requested by the city nor the the county. Um, it's not that we didn't want to look at that, but if that is a concern, that is more legal. That's all. Thank you.
Otherwise, I see no more public comments. So I'm going to close the public hearing. And um, we, four can discuss amongst ourselves and ask staff some questions since it's fresh. Eric, would you like to address the short-term rental situation that's been run out?
Yeah, so in Columbia Falls regulations, um, all our residential zoning districts allow for short-term rentals with uh an administrative conditional use permit. So if you chose to um limit this, particularly if the developers in agreement, you could condition the subdivision that it not allow that option. And I believe there's precedent um for that in, I think it was I think it was the original thirty-six unit CUP that that was placed um on that development. And then I I want to say there was another development um subdivision. there was another development subdivision that you, that the planning board prior to the planning commission had placed a, a condition on no short-term rentals. So it's not unprecedented. You can do it, particularly if the developer's in agreement. That condition can be placed on the plat, which would then follow through in title report in, in the future. So, and as, as a P V D condition, that becomes the new zoning.
And it's been brought up a couple of times, the developer's south of there, which I believe Mr. Gilchrist brought to us originally several years ago, and it was approved. And then later he returned and asked to allow short-term rentals on half of it. The council said no to that request. So the, the development wasn't turned down, as some people implied, but just that portion of it is originally was stated that it would not have short-term rentals. The applicant came back a month later after short-term rentals due to changing back conditions, and the council said no to that. Correctly, it did not deny, it didn't turn down the development. It just, it just sounds like there is precedent to have the sort of restrictions. So, okay, so we talked about short-term rental. What other issues would we like to talk to? Either ask staff about or amongst ourselves? Who would like to start?
Be happy to jump in, please, some, and say, I think there's no question that the law itself is well-suited for a higher density housing. It's currently already allowed by the current zoning regulations of the county. I think that it's really important to speak about that we're not really looking at a change as much as this annexation, which is not really a far question anyways. However, I do really struggle with this request for the combined twenty feet of setback variance to the north and south. Because my, my main issue here is creating a density that a lot otherwise would not allow for. I, I think even at gesture, you could easily accomplish fourteen units as drum without any zoning variation. And I think that that's a density that seems much more appropriate in my mind. Second to this, and as part of that, is I think this internal street having, you know, no simple city guidelines with what we require in boulevards kind of further compounds this issue of what I see as an overly dense flat. Those two things just combined, it just make me personally inclined to not want to entertain that kind of setback request. I, I, I just don't see the need for another project such as this. And I think that that would do a number to alleviate some concerns of adjacent neighbors with regards to the vegetative buffer. I think in particular, in looking through the existing conditions survey, the amount of trees that do exist within that twenty-foot setback is a substantial portion of the existing vegetation. So I, I just, it, it would trouble me to see us approve something that doesn't necessarily need that kind of variation. So, that's where I sit.
Yeah, and I just comment to that too. I think that's one of my concerns, a little bit about the Hulk and Max on the slot and taking into consideration adjacent property owners. By alleviating that twenty foot setback, we're actually potentially cutting out some of the safeguards for those adjacent property owners. You know, and at some point it is that later we're trying to force a significant number of units into, like, I, I am in favor, I think it's, you know, infill development regardless of how I want to, you know, see being close to urban services like this is, this is close to urban services by Columbia Falls standards. So I think the location is appropriate for exploring higher density. But I just say a question whether or not, given the adjacent property owners and the site itself, you know, it's got some pretty good grade in it. Six percent grade through there, and I'm just kind of trying to think in terms of like the property flow and how that's going to work. Have some concerns or reservations also to protect the future homeowners here. I take into consideration people applying to properties. So yeah, I've got, you know, a couple of other design questions. I'd be interested to hear how developer kind of plans to address or has approached addressing some of those concerns about, you know, letting the vegetative buffer making it a little bit more hospitable for someone adjacent to the homeowners there. I do, the TIS, I think there's a, do we have an update on like where these adjacent approved developments sit in terms of the construction phase right now?
No, they're both in limbo. It was, went, went to engineering, but it's not been submitted to the city or the DEQ for approval, but.
And he's got to be nearing three years.
I believe he's got an extension on his, so. And, and the CUP is, is close to expiring. So, so they're, you know, more than likely, if that proceeds, they'll have to come back for a new CUP.
I, yeah, I mean, I think my first concern right there was just any approach that I heard. And I know that's not per due necessity for our board to make that decision. Part of my reasoning behind these other developments coming in is as we see growth in and outside of our jurisdiction and the use of that thoroughfare connecting to Wavish. It is a little appealing to get an idea or concept of what the real condition of that roadway is now, knowing that we have it situated quite some time. So that's, that is appealing to know that that would be something interested in. We were so planted in that something, a direction to go. But I do, my base side, that's my first concern, just bringing another approach out there. And additional people without a clear path to a future pedestrian or alternative system there. So, so a couple of other design elements, but I think we can just pass and pass the option we listed.
Okay, and we can come back to the design elements just.
Yeah, that's okay.
Yeah, good.
Mark, I think we've. I agree with everything so far. I have some concerns with the, both the setbacks and setback in regards to the street. Kind of the sixty, which is a standard area that the thirty-four seems excessive. You know, being a regular looking at this, either one or two being changed, either the setback not being allowed with the roadway, either along or both seems somewhat excessive. And kind of causes a number of different issues when you come up with my position, so. I would be in favor of doing a TIS on this. But I think Sam had a great point, and we have more, just this subdivision of the street. So it'd be nice to see what future plan of traffic looks like out there as well as the deserting traffic. And I would like to see a deed restriction encouraged, short-term on this.
The, and we've been throwing, we're TIS around, that's draft impact study, or just for the audience to make sure. And I'll speak to that, and it is a, it sounds like the applicant was willing to do a TIS. So that, he said that, but.
Okay.
Go ahead, speak to that.
We have one from that last project.
Okay.
To my knowledge, that one's changed since that point in time.
And that was, where I was about to go, it's some of your, like, there was one done in the project in the south, there was one done in the project in the north. So unless there's new information, I think there was a capture. That's how I felt about it.
I, I agree too. I don't think that, that, I think it's a bit of a new bird on the applicant for this particular development, given that it's a person.
So that's one, so I, I don't feel that's necessary. The, we talked about short-term rentals, and as well, we've got the applicant here. They brought up some sort of deed restriction restricting short-term rentals. Would you guys be amenable to that, or is that something that you're not addressing?
I mean, addressing the last project, I had no goals originally of wanting to sort of vacation rentals. That was all product and COVID, the pricing, just trying to make that thing, that's a little on my mind. This will, this, well, this project is certainly long-term ownership, so I am open to it. I would be curious if Ruas was put under that same screen with this hundred-plus unit subdivision down the road. But no, the goal for it is certainly, certainly long-term ownership in this. And I actually came into this meeting with the assumption that this zoning didn't allow anybody, so.
And that's, in my opinion, is zillion, pretty much always.
In just understanding the process of yes, you still have to apply, and it still has to be approved under this, to be able to get, to be able to do it anyway.
Exactly. So, you know, the individual has to apply.
Right.
To be able to do that in Columbia Falls, on the zillion.
If it's stated accounting, what would that look like? If somebody else on the slot, they in vacation have this property, they can figure that out, do whatever.
I, I think that's correct.
I, I think the county allows vacation rentals with the administrative conditional use permit that I, I don't have there, I mean, regs in front of me, so I, I'm not a hundred percent sure into that answer.
I do, just to play that out, because most of the time I'm acutely aware of we've got a couple of concerns about the S T R issue on this project that do think that there's a rather detailed housing study that will soon have and have a more accurate picture about the short-term rental market affecting our community and our housing prices. I'm personally wary of this commission taking that issue on for this project at this time rather than city council dealing with that, and probably it's a much better picture of current S T R applications and the amount relative to existing properties, but that's just my personal opinion. And we're a couple months away from receiving a lot of information that we need to add on something like this that wouldn't necessarily be a necessary change.
I think I'll speak to some of the things that you guys brought up about the setbacks. And specifically, I know the, so there are setbacks smaller, you know, the backside, the outside of the property. But I believe the developer is putting a fence line in to sort of mitigate for that, and I'll work with that, Eric. Does that mean that, if there's a sensor, please go ahead.
Aaron Wallace, two six five Hawksley Lane, Wavish, one of the principal architects from Montana Creative. So yeah, I know, put together this layout, can kind of speak to the setbacks by, the numbers aren't driving the way they are. The reality is we have a very kind of narrowish lot just by the proportions of it and do a kind of a central drive aisle with two rolls, our roll house on each side made the most sense. At that point, you're just playing the numbers game. And kind of doing the initial layouts, knowing that the two car required is a big desire, and also having the, well, ability or ability for a car park between the garage space and the sidewalks was one thing. So we did some initial kind of layouts for the buildings and say what could actually fit, was what was left over. And that's why I said, boy, you know, to make these as efficient as possible, not having to go three stories and any sort of thing when people are finding that they have about four or five hundred square feet on that third floor. And then if they went, if these were sub, if these were townhouse lots, so kind of take the smallest, see if this stacked together. Then that would allow kind of about a thousand or so square, nine hundred square feet up on the second floor. And that would actually work for a layout for the building itself. When we went to the twenty-foot setbacks off the side or off the rears, it just really made it so inefficient that you would have to go to three stories for these sixes. And when we kind of looked at the initial of the property as it is owned right now, you can build within five feet, so those are the size setbacks at that point. So we're actually getting the protection of what is currently sitting there from an additional five feet on that side. Now, where we looked at doing it is a fence line where we had this kind of narrow ten-foot setback on the hole to that side. It has to be a fence on the north side and then also on the south side where that was, where the home loss would be. We also tried to encourage people to do as much of a buffer and as efficient as possible. I think when we look at the numbers and what this project is about, it's about efficiency and smaller scale sized lots and homes, which would allow for more entry-level types for footage and price of home to be able to get to smaller lots. You can't just build as big as you can, which means they're more efficient, which means more people can afford them. And that's the goal of this project. And so, you know, we tried to make as much, pull back the setbacks as tight as we could or as close to as required as we could. But there's no question these are smaller natural lots. Now, whether somebody decides actually to do a two units on one lot as a townhouse or a condo, or this one building on there, that'd be up to their discretion. A couple of other little things too is that when we looked at it, the overall open space for quite a bit of population was required, you know, thirty, thirty-eight percent versus thirty percent. And we're actually looking at it, some of the amenity packages, we have this big team around it there. Boy, we use that, or we're just seeing there's pavements, we kind of put a basketball hoop to provide amenity there and then pick up all this expulsion abuse. At the other side, boy, one just fits perfectly there. So trying to be as smart as we possibly could with these elements. In the studies that we've done, looking at the grading and smoking of this stuff, we actually wouldn't be able to, in my feeling, we'd be fairly easily able to accomplish stacking this that would actually split to be able to accomplish network with those grades. I've got an agreement, sections working throughout those lots, saying they have, it is feasible to do that. So I feel fairly confident that the actual plan itself works. Yeah, there is a lot of big trees out there. It's tough, you know, we're going to try to keep as many as we can, especially between things. But yeah, there's no question there's going to be a loss there. We're certainly happy to plant beyond the fencing too, to help kind of mitigate those aspects, you know, because. The street in the middle, since this is a private road, you know, we talked to these, to the city once initially because the sidewalk thing, right? Okay, when you put a sidewalk, you put up along the R T S, the same industry would be dealt with further down the road. Words are leading to it, right? I don't think there's anybody that would like more to have these sidewalks connect to the rest of the committee than the developer itself and the rest of the group. It's a question of timing of when. And I think that's what we've seen is that over the last few years with all the developments, how much you guys are meeting and seeing of this, it's become much more difficult to develop these type of projects and make them more精细化. That's why the Ruiz project hasn't gone, that's why the other one hasn't gone. So you have to be really smart and efficient in these type of things. And that's why we're talking about these number of size, number of units and size of lots for kind of what we're trying to accomplish. So the city, when they worked, talked to them, there is kind of thought, you know, like, do we need sidewalks one side? Do we need the both sides? Do we need that at all? This is kind of more of just a private thoroughfare versus having those sidewalk elements. And so that is kind of the goal, is to keep a holdup against the driveline there versus trying to. So it really is kind of a tight, it's not your typical subdivisions, one acre lot type things where you've got street trees and stuff like that. This is much more efficient. And that's for design, and we have to kind of tread to, to make these numbers work to actually get people into lots that they can build on and afford these type of things. So this isn't a big, single, you know, one acre lot subdivision. Something quite a bit different. So I'd be happy to answer any of the questions, but that's the overall design approach in terms of this.
Thank you very much. And I think Aaron articulated better some of the things that I was going to say. So I think you guys brought up really points about setbacks and, and the open space and different things, but it is, as he said, it's a very efficient development. That's what I was looking at when we think about making it as affordable. It's, it's a creative use and it's efficient use. And yes, it limits some setbacks in some ways, but as I heard reading the packets and someone pointed out already, that in the county right now, the setback is five feet. But that's what it is, and so this matches more. That's that, just because it's annexed in the city. So yeah, so some, some of those things that, that you guys are worried about, I totally respect. I see you're coming down, but I do see this as a good way to get that and efficient use of that space that can.
Can I speak to the five, please? I think it's important here to know that the county has a five-foot lot setback. But to get this kind of density, a developer would have to then, to stay within the county, would have to have its own waste fire treatment plant in this home well. And so a county lot that's going to be developed with a five-foot setback is probably going to be a potential house or building occupying within that five feet, but not the entire property being largely built up to ten feet with its boundaries. So I think it's always going to be a little cautious when we pull some of those requirements out of context. When we say the county allows it to five feet, we're probably not talking about a two point two acre strong structure that's.
We're probably not talking about a two-point-two acre strong structure that's a little ten-five feet.
I think, and then just to follow up, I think, um, regardless of where we go in terms, I, I guess I don't see the necessary justification to back off on setbacks through the open spaces. Um, so we, you know, we create these setbacks within the lots. You know, maybe we pull them back and we make sure that they're on the open spaces too. And I know it's for kind of applying the pain, um, but it's not necessarily a standard testing. Yeah. So I'm sort of.
Sam, do you have more specific design questions than I would?
Oh, I had some, you know, justification, I. So one of them was my setbacks, you know, I think if I'm reading this right, from sheet five of five, kind of the lot layout area dimensions. So we were applying that ten-foot setback across the entire lot. Just the question of whether or not that's really necessary, if that's what we're going to join to. Um, and then I have a little concern regarding the street sign, the thirty-fourth width, um. Like, I understand it, and I, I do think this is an appropriate nation not to work out, I think, a sixty-foot right away. No way, I think there was a good point, there are lots to the west and in the city we all stepped and very conscious about, is there going to be any residence or need to add connectivity to those, um, lots in the future? I don't know that that's here, but I think as we talk about these projects, it's important to know that, because throughout the west and Montana communities I've worked in, um, the foresight to secure that has been immensely. Um, where that six, I think, that's a good, like, provides. I do have a concern, the typical road section shows the sidewalk as not being delineated by any sort of curve. Um, and my concern there is some of these developments who've seen tight contract like this, it ends up being parked on and it's not a functioning sidewalk anyways. And so I'm just curious, like, are there something we can do there to make sure that that is actually delineated? But right now, it's sloped into the centerline and they're all doing it the exact same angle. I think, you know, even the E D A standards would suggest that we need some sort of delineation there, um, to designate this as a walking path and not just part of the rural road. That if you drive through, maybe you've seen the little spots on the side, it's made at the same level and it becomes the parking lane, so, yeah, um. That was kind of just a design, I just don't know if he's a really effective sidewalk. And you don't have a curve.
Um, may I address that too? The designs, is that, is what he's saying accurate about the, the road?
It's not, uh, sheet four, four or five, typical section shows that sidewalk and the curve.
Uh, so, I mean, typically when we do a sidewalk, it would be raised, you know, the six inches above to, you know, delineate, this is a walking path and this is, and this is kind of what I think Aaron's all looking to is when you, you know, you have the road, then you have a sidewalk requirement, and then you have, you gotta put a car in front of it, that's twenty feet. Um, and then if, then you've got setbacks, I mean, it gets to the point where there's, there's not, there's no room left there, but, um, yeah, in Tampa, you know, that sidewalk is raised and.
Okay, your typical section does look like that.
Okay.
On sheet four, your typical section really shows the roads, the, the grades of the same level, so. So, wait, there, seventy-four? Sorry, you look, your sidewalk, oh, I'm gonna, yeah, so I, just a concern for me, uh, and I had, so I just think in practice, um, those tend to not, then the reserve for.
I think you could add the condition that we elevate the sidewalk.
I am very sympathetic to the fact that a unit develops such as this, requiring two cars, parts of garages, I think something that needs to be addressed in the future, that's extraordinary, I'm realistic to require that developers, just with the amount of cost and burden of that. I'd love to see that go to one, but that's not for this project, that's a different zoning question. But I just, I will understand if architecture, they put in all the challenges embedded in this platform, I mean, it all makes sense when you do try to pencil it out and make use of that space, right? The case just had a single drive with units off of one end, I, that, I, I get it. Um, I just don't see that as appropriate use of setbacks, um, combined with the amount of pavement from centerline street all the way to garage. What, forty-some feet of continuous pavement just from centerline to garage today, straight? Um, that's tough, especially combined with a lot of mature trees that are on the farm. I love the project, I mean, my desk, that's, I love what we're trying to do, I just, I think, uh, guess six lots too many, or five lots too many, or something that, you know, losing some others on the outside, or the south side, for example, seems to be a better use of that, but.
So, and, and once, once I turn around, I want to question Justin on this, and then you can speak to that. It, it sounds like if we were to, um, or they were to take out some lots, but on a fourteen instead of twenty, I, and, I'm sure not, not, yes, but it. I mean, if you have a street down the middle of the story, it has to be small, both sides.
Yeah.
And otherwise, we're gonna have these streets on one side.
Yeah.
And then bigger lots, I think, will get stopped, but that's, that's what I'm hearing.
I, I, I think to, to, I think maybe more to point, you had said, to me, I don't think it's a both question, I think it's an integral with regards to setback variance versus the street variance. I don't see the need for both of those to be accepted in this project. Is that clear?
I, I, you're explaining it well, I was not sure.
So, I mean, from our standpoint, um, there's a requirement to parking spots per unit, correct? Okay, so we need that with the internal garage aspect. The twenty-foot setback from the edge of sidewalk to the basic garage was requested by the city to allow for people to park in front of their garage space, okay? So, once we had that marked, that's what prompted us to have that reduction from the back setback. So, you know, if we had that reduced to ten feet. So, we've done quite a bit of multifamily and projects all over, and especially even in Whitefish and Railtown District, where office is at. Where I've got from the edge of the sidewalk, ten feet to the edge of the, um, um, garage door. And at that distance, people typically don't park in that space because it's a walking through thing, so, and we still need all the parking departments. And at that point, you have enough depth to do a correct building design and not have to go rearly tall and funky and have the required setback off the backside. So, as you're saying, Justin, I think it's either or, and we'd be certainly be open to that. We'd love to have a ten-foot setback off that front, uh, sidewalk thing, and then get a full twenty feet off the backside. So, that, that's the design solution, we'll be open to it, certainly.
So, just to make sure I understand this conversation, um, what he's saying is that we could make the setbacks in the front smaller, which makes the setbacks in the back bigger. But then that would effectively, that would eliminate those parking spots in front of the garage. So, that's correct, and those, they add those at their request or through conversation with the city.
Correct. Because we find that people fill the garage up.
Yeah.
And we, we don't have the ability to say, clean out your garage so you can park in there.
Yeah, do we, do we require two covered, two?
We don't require two.
Yes, we don't, I mean, this is a developer choice to have a two-car garage.
Right, good, so, um, he's got, I see that all the time in town where people have garages that they park in front of them because they're, garage is full, but I, I don't give that half to you myself. Um, so I certainly know what that's like, and there's no, and with the, with these streets, there's no on-street parking at all. And as is, that was correct, we've never been all for that. Get the traffic lanes, and there's three public spots out front. There's no, there's no other opportunity to on-street parking. So if the garages came closer than ten feet, in ten feet or than twenty-foot setback, there would be no parking except for in the garage, effectively, so.
Well, the, the question you're trying to answer is, does it meet the parking requirement or not? The parking requirement is two spaces, right?
Right, and, and so I want to clarify, we're just proposing lots at this point. What anybody does with these lots is really up to them, but on that lot or that subplot, they would need to get two spots on that, for that individual, whether it's, if it's a subplot, you're still gonna get two spots for that one. If it's just used as one lot, they get to have, may have to have two spots for that. And whether that's inside or outside or whatever formation, that's up for their designer.
Yeah. I appreciate bringing that up, because I do want to circle back. Um, I think in conversation, you had mentioned, you know, it depends on the owner, they might build one building or they might build two buildings on here. Yes, can you speak to like, that feels a little confusing to me. We're talking about a townhome type development, we're talking about this high density, and then all of a sudden, um, the conversation was made where they can choose to build one unit. Is it possible we could see a single-family home place on these lots?
It's possible somebody could buy, you know, lot five A and lot five B and aggregate those and just build a single-family home. Yeah. But they couldn't build a detached, single-family home on, on B and then somebody else buys A and that it's, it's gotta be, unless they buy them both and aggregate them, they would have, they would basically be stuck with a, a townhome or, I, I suppose it could be, well, it's set up for a townhome, so.
Just want to speak to that too, I think that's fairly typical with a lot of subdivision and lots like that helped every. And I think, isn't it, in the statewide, I would say it's pretty much that, the what they pass, any single lot can be a townhome lot now, is that?
Yes, in, in municipalities now, I mean, basically, we don't have single-family zoning anymore. Every lot in the city, in any city in Montana can have two units, essentially a duplex, a townhome, um. Or, or accessory dwellings, so, I mean, there, there isn't single-family zoning anymore in Montana, in, in cities.
So this is a very small, single-family lot that is basically state zone, and really what we'll take a look at at that way, so.
I mean, it's important to be able to, because I think we, we don't want consider development with something in our mind's eye and recognizing that this could be interpreted far different by each independent law. And so just trying to, you know, especially when considering setbacks and, um, what the product may or may not.
And put some clarity to that, um, just so we're on the same page and the audience understands, with this development, um, you guys aren't going to be building all these and selling them. You're, the lots are getting, everything's getting set up, so they think they know what they want, they will buy lots, except that, and then build what they want. Is that correct? I mean, it is, I, I, I suppose I remember that way, and I'm not, I'm not meaning to jump to bottom of that, but I.
So the mind, my goal is to, um, to build them, so there would be, there would be a design, um, and there would be option A, option B. Um, it's not gonna, the idea is not for people to kind of build whatever they want, a lot, sell lots individually. So, yeah, they build them on them, that are, so people don't have to try to get construction on them, because most people are a lot of folks in this type of the price point, you know, you need a lot more, um, capital, and so coming with, if you want to build your own, from the construction, from the Christmas, being able to buy. Um, really constructive, I should.
Okay, yeah, great, I just wanted to make that clear, you're talking about what's something directly, and I know everything can still change, but right under their plan is you if this is true, you can build these zones and it's a, you know, it makes more broadly like you're talking about, you know. You don't need to go outside.
Well, I, I think that this is private development as part of the packet we read, that there would be an HOA setup, there are C C Rs. I think if the city's concerned about off-street parking, um, that's addressed in those covenants. Correct, so I, I think that ultimately, like, the HOA would have your station over some development for how those cars are parked or not parked gradually. Um, and by that token, I think you could, you could alleviate the concern about how those are getting to property lines by allowing a more generous, uh, setback variance to the front of yard on the street. Then it's, it's sort of doing two things that I would like to see. One is preserving the neighborhood's environmental rights and with central character by having the problems upper on the sides and keeping those mature trees, right, isolating this development, these aesthetic links. But then getting the type of densities that will allow, particularly that, which I think the community needs, and which the zone supports. So, I, I know it's different than what the city's proposed, but I think that type of conditional approval is something I would be much more interested in.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think Justin, I'm with you in terms of, um, I love the creativity of it, um, and I like like how we're trying to address the portable housing, and then just they feel, it feels as presented, it's kind of gone, how big can we get? And how much, I mean, it compromises kind of really come at the expense of a lot itself. As opposed to maybe tweaking that sign and working, you know, this, coming in and looking at different bunch setbacks or something like that. We do, they're sitting down saying, is this a product? Well, we know people want two-car garages, is the product compromised by trying to purchase two-car garage at the expense of, of offer to our neighbors or take the addition trips, so it's, it's feeling the lot take the ball, um, on the burden. But I can appreciate, I mean, I appreciate the difficulty of trying to make these things possible.
And I, I really like what you guys are saying, but I do, I respectfully disagree, because we've got there's more density there, north and south, there are things that are approved, um, it's already, today's zone for these dense developments, this is a very creative way to get more affordable, and I, I really respect what you guys are, are saying about pushing on these, but I, I do like that it's creative and that it is as efficient as it can be, and I can see how they were trying to get that there, and how making this more affordable. And we've seen this with developments around town, that every time we take this and it's directly twenty units, and then it's going to be taken down to maybe fourteen, twelve, ten, I mean, that's oftentimes raising the price by thirty, sixty percent.
And can I maybe interject a little bit here? Um, so it seems like you guys have some, so, some suggestions or some solutions. So you could put together a motion for a, a condition, and it could be that, the the P U D's, uh, rear yard setback would, would not be deviated, it would remain at twenty, but you would reduce the front yard setback to ten. And in addition, that you would just have a simple condition that each unit has to have two parking spaces. And that would either be a two-car garage, a one-car garage with a twenty-foot driveway in front of it. And then they can figure it out and they can put it in their C C N Rs that, you know, if some guy decides to park his boat in front of the neighbor's house and they can't get in a garage, then they can, the HOA can address it, just like.
So, hold, hold on that one second, because I, I think that might be where, uh, does the board wants to go more than I do. Um, so that might be where we go, but looking at the practicalities of it, where I do think that people do just park in front of their garage and they want that space and know that they've met the, the conditions of the two, two units and not, um, butting with legality, that's a met legally, but how people actually use their property. Um, I like having two-car garage and having the space parking like that. Um, but if you guys, um, like a condition like that, because that gives more flexibility, you need them. When you can make that proposal and even forward, I like. I like where it is because it meets legal standards and tells people to use their property. Um, so that that's where I come down with this, and I've thought about wrestling this a lot, um. But yeah, that that's where I come down, so if you like to keep the post, we can, um, because we should now be down to we can talk about it. Let's make some um, proposals, move ahead of some things, um. And what I'll suggest is
Do you have that motion to approve and then maybe?
Yeah, so we we should really go through the first, yeah, first motion, which is the initial zoning, the annexation, initial zoning, and to the CR five, make that, and then we can move into the PUDs and and get a motion on for the PUD and then we can amend the condition.
That's good.
Okay.
So I would, I would move, make a motion that we, I think the first piece was to adopt the zoning and annexation.
Correct.
Um, so I would move, uh, the motion to adopt uh, the zoning and annexation as presented. Now, sorry.
Okay, we got a motion by Kavanaugh, seconded um, by Mark Mark Johnson over there, um, all in favor. I I oppose, same or none. So we have approved the annexation and initial zoning. Now we move on to the second part, which is the planning and development, the PUD. Um, and this, the PUD is, this is where we can make those because we wouldn't do that on the subdivision part.
They're they're hand in hand.
Okay. So first, what we need to do then is get a motion on the table to approve, and then we can do a amendment, is that correct?
Correct.
House works. So do I have a motion on that CPUD twenty-four oh one?
Absolutely.
All right, Moji Johnson, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Kavanaugh, um, now discussion, and then that's um. Before we complicate the waters, how about we circle back to um, the short-term rental question? Um, I think um, uh, Justin mentioned he kind of put that off, um, where it sounds like the developer's minimal to it. I think it would be nice to have a condition that the short-term rentals.
Kind of comfortable with that, I mean, having sound previous finding word, um, and then part of the conversation. I feel it's confidence in keeping place of both, we're intending this development.
Will you guys make a motion to that effect?
Uh, I mean, I think that uh, the CNRs would like that short-term rentals are allowed.
And so that would be, that there is that adding another condition approval.
Twenty-eight.
And also let's add it to the face of the plat.
Yeah.
Okay. That's noted to the conditions and to the base of platform. So we've got the motion by Kavanaugh, we have a second. Second by Johnson. Um, all in favor? I I oppose.
We're fine.
All right, so three to one.
Yep.
Um. So note the, that that thing um, against that. And now there was also we want to add, Sam, the condition about the sidewalk, clarifying the elevation changes, we talked about that in there, because I think it
Yeah, I mean, I think it's bad. Kind of sounds like a bit of a petty condition, um, but I think if that's where we needed to go, I just like see as there, you know, some sort of elevation, right? And then I think probably clearly stating that there's no hard streets or the CCNRs, you know, there's no hard street, right? Um, regardless of which direction we go, uh, with that, we're talking about the narrow street corridor. So it's appropriate to put that as a condition, I would condition that the sidewalk is divided in elevation.
Yes, but that I think you you need that because there application.
I recognize it, the way I read is it will be in like in kind of packets, so that's why. Um, and then I would piggyback on that with uh, and that the CCNRs reply that there's no street.
So that would be condition twenty-nine, is everyone understand that and Eric and Justin, we have been, we need to make that so about using that language here? Or is your expression telling me that we should not do that as a grant?
Well, I mean, I I am a little troubled by the uh, no on-street parking. Knowing about our subdivision just to the north of us here that has a very narrow street allows on-street parking, no change from street to sidewalk elevation.
Um.
And 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 what I suspect to be the direction of the commission for um allowing or just allowing the spaces in the garage to count for parking spaces, which they do.
They do, absolutely.
And then reducing the front yard setback to ten feet.
I I
So are you effectively creating a subdivision where there's no parking allowed anywhere?
Yeah, well, I I think we're, we would be requiring the two parking spaces per unit, as required. And but I think, you know, the the fire chief basically wants twenty-four feet worth of access. And so if, so we, there can't be parking on the street with the twenty-four.
I'm just wondering.
But that's my concern, because we're considering, we're considering uh, deviation between this street corridor that effectively makes it so it is only two-way traffic, right?
Yep.
Um, and if we have anybody parking, they're either a parking on pedestrian sidewalk, or they're blocking that two-way thoroughfare, so for me, it's like if that I would say, if we can't place a no parking, then I'm a little hesitant to go and accept it. You know, a different decision.
Yeah, I I think, I think, I think we can require the no parking. Um, while we would, it would be most likely be part of our public works review anyway. When when public works reviews it with the fire chief, they would be requiring the signage, I think. And and the other thing is, you know, even with a ten-foot driveway, you can park parallel on a ten-foot trifecta and be off the sidewalk, so there there technically is parking, a parking space.
Well, that's true, then I think that, you know, that that can solve it, I just I think the public health and safety aspect of having, um, you know, two parking spaces in the garage, a a short ten-foot driveway and people by default parking on the street, no access by fire truck emergency services if it's blocked, but I just I I don't want you running into that, you know, as you make conditions that change the layout or, you know, the required dimensions of it, so. If that's true, you've got a ten-foot setback in front, a shorter driveway, somebody can actually park there in front of the garage. Okay.
And could we, and and when I first brought up the the no-on-street parking part of our discussion, I wasn't necessarily thinking there would be one conditions, I put logistically, there's no place to park in the street. Um, and that's because it's just so narrow, there's there's just not really room. And that, is that something we didn't condition it, that the public works or the fire chief could just say, yeah, there's no parking on the street, the public safety, bam?
It's a, it's it's in our public work standards, um, by the width of the street. I mean, we don't have parking, we would be looking at a much wider street.
Right. Um. So it sounds like maybe you don't need to put that as a condition.
We wouldn't necessarily need to put that as a condition because public works can do that, but I do think we need to have the sidewalk elevated condition because the cross-section in the application package shows a no distinction.
Eric, I'm kind of opposed one day, I mean, we've been talking about, again, trying to get this much of a setback off every property as possible, really what we're doing is playing with ten feet, well, does five feet accomplish a lot more? I mean, if you pull, give a fifty-foot setback off the backside and fifteen feet off the front, I mean, it gives a little bit more maneuverability and some smaller vehicles can kind of park up there in the front. Um, I would see it probably hanging out, just my office experience, I've got the same scenario, and they will park in the sidewalk aspect over the rail town district and um, you know, it's just, it's kind of the reality of things, so. The other option too is that we do have a three, three identified um, parking spots. I think there is availability in that area without exceeding our thirty percent or could be on that to add in a few more additional parking spots up in the area, um, maybe possibly on the other side of that. So that could be an option too, maybe to get some more adjacency parking.
Thank you, thanks.
That's fine.
Um. So I would think, I would propose to us that we maybe a sidewalk elevation, for now, leave parking separate from the side.
Um. I would amend my motions or anything like that, and you know, people would
Okay.
The city.
Okay, so so we're, to be clear, you left out the part we were not putting that in, the public works can't fire the deal with that. This is just to say there will be an elevation change between the sidewalk and so that was your proposal.
Yep.
That was your motion, did we have a second on that?
I saw him.
Okay, so um, Justin made a second to that, um, all in favor?
I.
I I oppose, no. So we've added number twenty-nine, short-term rentals, sorry, twenty-eight, short-term rentals, twenty-nine, sidewalk elevation. Um, and then, and are there any other big issues that missed besides setbacks that we wanted to talk about? Okay, just want to make sure that um, because this was this is the last thing that we applied to the max, and if we want to do any um, changes to that.
Just that, not changing the, I just wanted to clarify, because this is something I've been past, trying to find the uh condition, and then the condition was to preserve as many trees as possible, and that's been a difficult thing. Um. To kind of, is that just, that'll be with the architecture review or landscape plan review kind of identified?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, just, I I don't want to place the burden on anyone specifically to say like this is going to be cast, but it's because I think that that's super so probably I did see that in the long the past, that's always been a difficult under there.
Well, if it, it's more important if it remains with the ten foot.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, I have one thought, I don't, I'm just kind of thinking out loud, because we're talking about the setbacks and everything, I just want to make sure, like I haven't had a chance to really talk this through with them, but like, are we, is is there would would the neighbors be more interested in having a twenty-foot setback or a ten-foot setback potentially with a higher fence? I just want to make sure we're not sacrificing safety for twenty homeowners for, when we're talking about the setback, if that makes sense. If there's any other things or ideas that we could be thinking of here that would uh, potentially help with some of the the neighbors' concerns. Um, it's because, I mean, some of the other alternatives of the design are going higher stories, which we don't want to do, because that's definitely not great with the with the neighborhood, you know, just going three levels to go with small footprint is not, not great, it's not the same for this this area, so. Just want to make sure there's no other ideas that would be consideration before we just
Yeah.
So I can.
I appreciate that, Toby, um, Chris, do you want to?
Do you want to turn it off? Yeah, please. So, um, just to clarify too, I actually live so I live on lot A, which is parcel B, I'm parcel A.
Okay.
So, yeah, so I'm a lot right here, my house is right here. Um, I do have a fence, obviously that's encroaching quite a bit on the property, um, plans are in the are in the works, but um, yeah. That happens, um, I'm not sure, this is the first time I've seen this map, I'm not sure if um they have plans to build any fence on this backside, or if that's just going to be open, um.
I'll clarify briefly, but I think the plan was to build it from here over. Yeah, and leave that open as much natural as possible. Okay. We could extend it, but it seemed like the plans in the middle was then maybe accomplish.
Yeah, I might, maybe, maybe a privacy fence, um, because, I mean, my back window is right here. Um, so I mean, it's a pretty big window. Uh, maybe just a nice privacy fence, I don't know, um, it's the first time I've looked at this map here, um, but
How high were you looking for?
Six feet. Six feet, preferably, yeah, like, in my mind, we're not completely against this, um, it's just obviously privacy issues on our part and um, I mean, obviously my lot's right here, so I have all that there, um. Majority are concerned is just privacy issues with these houses facing, you know, our windows there, that close.
That's some of my concern about moving that setback and making up well, I guess it's making it probably differently, but um yeah, if it were a smaller building pad, then we have to go higher potentially, and then I'll, I guess where I was kind of finishing.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I was worried, I was worried too about, uh, obviously runoff on my property, um, obviously I see maybe a drainage system back here for the water, so that's a plus.
Two.
There is, that's a dig two. All these ones, just on the backside, yeah, so it would be nice to have some. So yeah, one of the concerns too was water coming down on my property, my will right here. Um, so I just wanted to affect my my will.
Yeah, sorry, please.
Oh, no worries. Um, so yeah, just, I mean, like, I talked to a couple of my neighbors, the neighbor behind me, the neighbor next to me, um, was over here, Jelani, he's going to make it tonight, um. Neighbor behind us, he was talking to if he was going to come, he said probably not, because they're going to approve it a hundred percent. I said, okay, well, in a twenty ways, um, but I mean, we came in here kind of knowing it was going to get approved most likely, but I kind of just want to talk about my concerns, but seeing this map too, seeing how it's actually laid out, um, but you know, it's being a nice privacy fence on that side would be, be nice, um, Jelani on this side of the neighborhood, he has a nice privacy fence himself. And the neighbor behind us actually has an achievement road on this property here. Yeah, right, they're like, that's his property, um, so I think they should be good, Jelani should be good, it's just kind of our property right there, that kind of is going to be very exposed to this development.
Yeah, and so it sounds like your proposal, you'd be, I don't say happy, it sounds like you'd feel happy to have your
Yeah.
with six-foot privacy to the soul.
Yes, yes, absolutely. Yeah. I mean, it's, it's I'm not, I'm not going to give any setbacks, because I'm not, you know, setbacks, but um.
So as proposed, it has property line ten feet in.
Okay.
And then they
And they're only
They run the yards here, no backyards, obviously, because I've heard that, they would be able to build within ten feet of the property, which doesn't leave much of a backyard.
Yeah.
Okay. By trying to put your privacy fence in, if you move that twenty feet, it's going to get smaller, so I show.
So this is a lot in the habitat to community with the small sack yards and the small park rooms.
I I think that's a
Yeah, we actually use the web over there. Yeah, people do park on the sidewalks.
I'm not, I'm not like, no, I can actually say, my name is Michelle, but the same address.
Thank you, Michelle.
But we did own one of those habitat houses, and the HOAs, they do not enforce the parking on the sidewalks. I can't tell you how many times people park on the sidewalks and block.
So have that curb of a plus.
Everything.
Right, not for my benefit, because I'm not living in that neighborhood.
And that's why the city's recommendation was to have that twenty feet between the other sidewalk, have two garage, knowing that people, that's the way they live.
Well, they didn't have a curb on their sidewalks.
Right.
So that's a huge point, right, they're living in that neighborhood, I can't tell you how often
Can't.
fire trucks, you guys.
Yeah.
Oh, I, I get, yeah. Well, yeah, my my main concern is the privacy on one side, so.
So yeah, so, thank you both, that's, I, yeah, that's very good, I'm here for that, um.
Hey, Aaron.
Yes.
Can we, can we make a delineation as to what is and is not public hearing, just for the record?
Sorry.
So we know. No, it's okay, I just want to make sure that we're not losing sight of, are we in deliberations with commission members, are we getting testimony from applicant, are we doing public hearing?
Yeah.
So you might want to just say a few things.
So it was, it's my understanding that right now we are asking questions and we are getting information from the applicant and also asking questions of the neighbors to help inform our deliberations, and that's what I think we're doing, is that what we're doing?
You tell me, you're you're trying to make it, it's asking that you make some
That that's, that's what we're doing, if I understand, we're doing deliberations, we want further information so we can better understand the situation. We want further information so we can better understand the situation. So, thank you for that clarification, this is not the public hearing, this is um us gathering further information. Um, well, that said, so what I'm hearing and what sounds like a, um, I think you guys might still want to work on setbacks more. I think it could be setbacks, putting the condition of a privacy fence on that north side um is that is easy for the golfers to do and it swages many of the neighbors' problems. Um, that's, I think we should do, but if you guys don't like that, um, let me know. Because I think, as we've talked about several times here, and um it's the way that people live, if we narrow, if we move things towards the front, and if on ten foot or fifteen foot, people are still going to park for the. And I think we need to be cognizant of the reality of how people live in parks. Um, and I'm very sensitive to to all the other competing demands that come out of the creativity and the efficiency of this space. Um, I think it serves well. But we're looking at possibly doing a another one condition approval of thirty, but we may be talking about there whether that's setbacks or fencing.
Yeah, I mean, I in lieu of additional information, I think it's, it's helpful to hear Jason Pop, owners with their preference, let the preferences um. I am still, I guess I'm inclined, I am hesitant to go to fifteen feet or ten feet because I do believe like it will be difficult to park there, um, I don't know how many people park perpendicular to their garage space while I apply. Apply considering.
Well, possible, I.
Yeah, so, you know.
Maybe a couple of spot.
Um, it's always, it's tough with these because we don't know the final product, we don't know exactly what we're going to be looking at. And putting there a six-foot fence, it'd be putting a condition there that there's some sort of working, you know, like six-foot privacy fence. I guess I would, I also condition not that it has to be of the best that I just happen to recruit by Jason Pop here, but maybe they just have hints to deliberate. So, um, I, I, I would still propose keep the open spaces not having them. It's the ten foot, so, I still propose that we keep those open spaces that they're old. I'm not going to die.
I I don't have a bad view of spaces.
So they, they, there's a portion of the open space in the property that are not part of the housing lots. So the twenty lots or the ten, ten lots, um, excepting that all of them without a ten-foot setback from their property line, so if you next figure it, whatever, it's just.
What if we do, like, if you have this, there are open spaces.
Yeah, it's that, if we live in, if we live in this region here, right? It's not really necessary to drop down to our ten-foot setbacks on these pieces that are maybe open spaces as well as our open space there. Um. So, just, first of all, can you do that?
Can you partition off setbacks?
I've yet, they give them a condition that says on the ten, ten lots that they can build to within their setbacks and the open spaces. Maintain, I I, Eric, Eric, I know it's a little bit of a drafty conundrum.
Well, yeah, you, we could, you can list out um basically lots eight, nine, and ten. Um. Would have up to the, up to the twenty-foot setback because lot, lot eight, part of it would, I mean, it's, it would be on an angle, but yeah, we could, they could wrap the lot to have.
You want to kind of be exterior, that's sort of base in the lawn path, the post one base and just making sure like that little flag that goes out there, like, we don't need to have a ten-foot setback off of this property.
Well, can I clarify something, I just want to make sure, is that the property lines for the sub lot or the lots itself right here?
Correct, but as 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 it said, this will also be considered a property line, right?
So, right.
I just say we can build there.
And we actually, let me think of a common space?
Mm-hmm. Which, and I'm just, that, that you ever build some sort of auxiliary building or some sort of meeting shed or something of that nature, making sure that it's still going to be twenty feet away. Um, I'm again, I'm not going to die on that seat.
I think, I like you for going, I don't think that's necessary for this. And even when you get down to the, if they would build something there, then they would have less than thirty percent open space that could be required to have, so I don't think they could build something there without infringing on some of their other rules. Um.
I don't think there are open spaces when you.
Yeah, I think we have a condition that basically states that the HOA and city have to approve any changes to the open space.
Okay. Um. So are we? So that's, that's what I think we should do, but if I'm missing something in our deliberations. Um, so if if that's what we're talking about, I will accept that motion that we are. I guess we don't need to say that we're accepting setbacks, that's implied, we don't change it, but we can do privacy fence and just on the that north side or we want on the south side, if a head should be, a name should be for all for all setbacks of them. North and south, we've got a property line, so the rear yard setback for the, okay, all this, that's. You look at the rear yard setbacks, because in both cases, that's the rear yard setback. Yeah, and that would be required for the option to build a privacy fence, there's six-foot privacy fence. And that sounds, not, I see that sound, then you guys were.
I told them to put it on here.
I'll accept that motion if someone wants to make it.
Okay.
Okay, so moved by Johnson, um, you're our second.
What what is the motion, I just.
That there be a six-foot privacy fence on the, how did you put it, Justin, the rear yard setback.
For north and south property boundaries.
Yeah, north and south property boundaries, um, but that does not include the open spaces, it's just the, it's just the the yards. I think that's.
And there, and then you're not changing the requested deviation.
Correct, we're not.
So the fence has solved that, all the discussion.
Yes. So it solves a big, we're setting that aside and saying the fence kind of takes care of it.
Okay.
Is that clear? And writing a new safety notes, it has to put this in form, motion formally, you understand who we're talking about?
Caleb and I will work on the conditions and the uh and the motion.
We apologize. Okay, so motion was made, did we have a second? Oh, second, we have a second, we have enough. So that's, that's number thirty, which would be fence, all in favor? I, all opposed. But.
No, sorry.
Okay, sorry, okay. It's, okay, so that's all of us on the fence, and so we added three conditions, um, the P U V or any other conditions in our discussion that we don't need to add. All right, so we have the motion on the floor, seconded, we discussed and we added this.
So can I ask, what are the three conditions that we're in, to show we all know for?
Um, elevating sidewalks.
So it was number twenty-eight was the short-term rental restriction.
Right.
Number twenty-nine was the sidewalk elevation, and number thirty was the privacy fence.
Yeah.
You all clear on that? Thank you for clarification, we're getting down to weeds a little bit here. Um. Okay, so. We added the P U V that we have um added conditions to. And now we can go on there, right?
The P U D findings of that and thirty, now thirty conditions.
Yes, so that's number, that's pretty much the recommendation number two and three, you guys do choose every person, but then just number two, so I want.
That's number two, that's number two, and then number three, you'll do a separate motion.
Okay, so I'm going to read this, somebody else made that we are recommending the, what we call, we're adopting Stafford CP U D twenty-four oh one as findings of that with thirty conditions. And that P U D already needs to reach subjects to those conditions. But that would be the motion that is why you're pulling me. I'm sorry, that was seconded by thing, all in favor? I, opposed, none. All right, so now we're on to number three, which is this the sub addition. So this would be the preliminary.
CPP twenty-four.
C, oh CPP, sorry, I confused by CP and CPP. All right, so this would be, we're adopting Stafford CPP twenty-four oh one as findings of fact. Okay, you want to move that way? I'll make that motion, things made the motion, you have a second?
Second.
Second by Johnson, and all in favor?
I, I, I.
Opposed, none. So we have Stafford CPP twenty-four lines. We accept this finding back, then we're recommending to the city of Columbia Falls, that that. So to be clear for our audience members, it's in January when this comes forward, council? Caleb?
January twenty-first.
January twenty-first, we make recommendation to the council and they're the ones that have the final decision. So you have time to talk to them um about what you'd like to see and they can change or amend or totally deny. Um, what we put forward, um, that's up to them, we've given them our recommendation and they'll have, and now you've got this packet which shows me or the other. Peter, can you have your question?
I do, um, just to go, there's names, there's spelled wrong. And I just want to make sure the correct spelling, the G I L C, maybe our I N C.
All right, so we've moved through all of the items on our agenda tonight. Unless, Eric, is there anything else that I missed that we need to deal with tonight?
No, I was just double checking our legal notice on the council date, and that's correct.
Well, you get a letter in the mail that found us for that date, or is it arms?
It's on the one that was sent to you.
Okay.
Again.
It's on that one.
You argued you could see that. All right, I see no other further business come forward, commission? I would air Daniel to you, Jerry. You have a second? All in favor? I, I, thank you all for coming, I appreciate it, I love it, thanks. Yeah. Yeah, that's good, you're straight. Yeah, yeah. Yeah. And really, that's the.
That's like a stretch, I'm going to ask you.
Absolutely. And they can input in the packet for council. It'll be a draft. So you have to prove that, but if we have, they'll have. And that will, that will be. We're nine minutes. You know, helpful. Yeah, now it'd be helpful, but but if someone has been on the council side, then of course, it's nice to have someone talk. Yeah, I'm sure, yeah, I just wanted to add that. Yeah, just like the the way it'd be, like, we went around a couple of things, I was like, I agree with you, but I think we should do this instead, you know? I'm happy to do that. I can't look at you.
You drop a sticky note off.
No, I just think I'd be really. Go through the same thing, they're going to have five, so you can argue.
Yeah, man. Right where we can.
Correct. Well, and what?
Yeah, that comes to us.
Anyway, I think I was just saying, that would be helpful.
Yeah, no, I'm happy to do that, so I just want to remind me. What was the, January first?
Yeah, second meeting. The second house.
Yeah, you can give me.
I'll, if you hear of anyone else who wants to.
Yeah, I'll, yeah. Worst case, you go.
Yeah, it's perfect, appreciate that.
Yeah.
And then can you turn that off, I have to.
I will, yes. I will not have a T N N.